All right, with that, I am going to call the February 4th, 2025 Tom Water City Council Meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, and we will start off with roll call.
Okay, Councilmember Leetta Dahlhoff.
Present.
Councilmember Angela Jefferson.
Present.
Can you mute yours? Maybe that's the problem on your laptop? No? We have so many fun things tonight. Okay, Councilmember Joan Cathy.
She is excused this evening.
Councilmember Eileen Swarthout.
She's also excused this evening.
Councilmember Michael Althouser.
Present.
Councilmember Peter Agabe.
Present.
Councilmember Kelly Von Holtz.
Present.
Mayor Debbie Sullivan.
And I am here. Thank you, and we will now do the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the state's honor, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
All right, our special item this evening is proclamation for Black History Month for February 2025. And Councilmember Von Holtz, if you could read the proclamation, please.
Okay. Whereas the city of Tom Water proudly embraces the cultural diversity of our community and honors organizations, families, and individuals of African-American descent and appreciation of their invaluable contributions that continue to enrich our city and unite and sustain us as a community. And whereas Tom Water was settled by George Bush, a prominent member of the 1845 Settlement Party, and his family. A frontiersman and successful farmer, he was the first Black settler to receive a land grant in Washington Territory. And whereas in 1915, noted Black scholar Dr. Carter G. Woodson, son of former slaves, founded the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History and initiated Negro History Month in 1926 to encourage the study of African-American history. And whereas Black History Month was formally adopted in 1976 to honor and affirm the importance of Black people in American history, advance the cause of civil rights, and to strengthen families, communities, and the nation. And whereas Observing Black History Month provides opportunities to gain a deeper understanding of African-American history and acknowledge the centuries of struggles for equality and freedom. And whereas Black History Month serves as both a celebration and a powerful reminder that Black history is American history, Black culture is American culture, and Black stories are essential to our continued journey towards a better society, to understanding ourselves and growing stronger as a community. And whereas the study of African-American life and history has selected African-American in labor as the theme for Black History Month 2025, highlighting the ways their work has profoundly shaped the experiences of Black people throughout history and recognizing the significant contributions of Black workers, from enslaved laborers to modern-day professionals, in shaping the American economy. Now therefore, Debbie Sullivan, Mayor of the city of Tom Water, does hereby proclaim the month of February 2025 Black History Month and calls upon the people of the city of Tom Water to celebrate the contributions of African-Americans that are central to society, including civic, economic, professional, medical, scientific, military, and artistic excellence. Signed in the city of Tom Water, Washington, and recognized on this fourth day of February in the year 2025.
Thank you. And we have Dr. Thelma Jackson with us this evening that I will be presenting the proclamation to, so if you'll join me at the podium. So, Dr. Jackson, will you go ahead and give us a few words? And I believe you have a very significant event going on this month.
Thank you, Mayor Sullivan, members of the council. We deeply appreciate this proclamation in recognition of Black History Month and what it stands for and the words in your proclamation speaks to the progress that has been made as we've gone from Negro History Week to Black History Month. We, in the Black community, celebrate it every day. The celebration is one thing about the contributions, successes, and triumphs that our people have made significance in this country, but it also brings about sadness in our memory of what our ancestors have gone through to get to this point. When we think about this year's theme of African-Americans as a labor, we have to be reminded about the many decades that that labor was free and up on the backs of African-Americans that this country was built. And while the proclamation speaks of the contribution to the success of this nation, we don't have enough conversation going on about all of that free labor, and we're still trying to catch up as a people from the point of view of the economy and the point of view of equity and equality. We look at these decades, really, of what has transpired, and Black History Month gives us an opportunity to reflect on those things, to look back and be reminded of from whence we've cometh as we prepare for the road ahead. And we all know that in this day and age, the road ahead looks grim for us all. Martin Luther King once said that we all came over in different ships, but we're in the same boat now. That's truer than ever as we look at what's going on in our nation today. The New Life Baptist Church has been an entity in the community that's been putting together and presenting a Black History museum, and I would like to invite all of you, council members, staff, residents of Tom Water, to this museum that is open every Saturday afternoon for the month of February. It has been going on for a number of years, but it has grown in size and in depth, and it's a time to come through, read, learn, observe about how we got here in 2025 and what that history looks like. It's not taught in our schools, so we have to teach it in our communities. And this year, we expanded our invitation to all the school districts in Thurston County to institute an educational field trip for their students. We did so for North Thurston School District in Lacey last year, but the response was so overwhelming that we included all of the school districts in the county this year, of which there are eight. And unfortunately, we didn't hear back from Tom Water School District. So students in the Tom Water School District won't have the opportunity to visit the museum and to see what's going on as other students in the community. But we take this time to reflect upon African-Americans in America, African-Americans in American culture, African-Americans in history, and we don't look upon it as a separate history, but it is a part of American history. And so we try to educate, we try to inform, we try to help people understand exactly who African-Americans are in this nation. And the proclamation for this year by not only Tom Water but the other cities and the counties speak the words and say the things, and it's at a time where everyone, including you, passed rather powerful resolutions, yours was a resolution, the others were proclamations, calling out hatred and racism and your commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. And so all of these things are words, but we really find ourselves as a people having to come to grips with what those words mean and who will be standing tall in the face of all the attacks we're under right now. So we applaud you for this proclamation. We recognize that of the cities and the county, Tom Water is the oldest of us all. And when we talk about George Bush and his contributions to your community, still too many people in this area have never heard of George Bush and the role he played and how significant it was to the survival of other settlers that came behind him and his family. And we have to ask ourselves, why can that be in 2025? But it is. And so again, I invite you to visit our museum from 1:00 to 4:00 on a Saturday afternoon and learn about more than just George Bush, but other dynamic African-Americans who have contributed mightily to the settlement of this country and to help make America what it is today. So again, I thank you and appreciate this, and we accept this wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Thank you, and I do plan on attending this month, one of your Saturdays, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're now to public comment. Do I have a sign-up sheet?
And we have three online, but no one that would like to speak.
Okay. No one? Okay, all right. So is anyone in the council chambers wanting to speak at public comment? All right, with that, we will then move to the consent calendar. So do I hear a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Von Holtz, seconded by Councilmember Althouser. I don't, any discussion? With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Motion carries. With that, we have approved the minutes of the city council work session of January 14th, approved the minutes of the city council meeting of January 21st, payment vouchers, resolution number R-2025-002, adopting the 2025 Fee Resolution, Grant Amendment to the Department of Ecology for the Beehive Industrial Area Stormwater retrofit design project, and reappointment of Trent Gunther, Alex Cohen, Broderick Coville to the Tree Board. And so we do not have any other business before the council tonight, so we will then move to committee reports. First one is Public Health and Safety, and Councilmember Agabe.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ooh, we're getting feedback. That, we're getting feedback, so when you, we may have to dispense with that report and I don't know what it is. Yeah, we're trying to, we're trying to figure out how to get that from not providing, giving feedback.
Yeah, Lance is on remotely, so we'll see if he can maybe fix it, but I have no idea what's happening.
Okay, so we're gonna go then to, we'll, we'll see if we come back to that, Public Health and Safety. General Government Committee?
Paul in the AV room will need to mute his microphone.
All right, you said we mute all microphones?
No, sorry, Paul in the AV room needs to mute his microphone.
Okay, that, that, that would make sense. Councilmember Agabe.
Let's try again.
Very good. It worked. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So for Public Health and Safety, our meeting is on, is going to be on February 11. So I see two items, the ILA with Thurston County for Basic Life Support Funding and Body One Camera Update. Those are the two items on our agenda for development.
Great, thank you. General Government Committee, Councilmember Althouser.
Thank you, Mayor. The General Government Committee has not met since our last council meeting, but we are meeting in a special meeting on February 18th. That's a different day than we typically do, and thank you to my colleagues on that committee for entertaining my request to do a different date while this is sort of a busy time of year for me. At that meeting, we have a pretty busy schedule. We'll be discussing the Bush Prairie Habitat Conservation Plan and a service provider agreement for Phase Four. We're going to have an amendment to the service provider agreement to the Housing Authority of Thurston County regarding senior, the senior housing project we're partnering with them on. We'll get an update on the climate element of our 2025 comp plan as we continue that work, and then we'll also be discussing an ordinance around home energy score models.
Great, thank you. Public Works Committee, Councilmember Swarthout is excused tonight. Councilmember Althouser said he could cover that.
Thanks. The Public Works Committee is meeting on Thursday, and we will be discussing the water system cost of service report as well as getting an update on our utility assistance programs.
Great. And since I was, had an AWC event to attend and missed the Budget and Finance Committee, Councilmember Althouser is also going to report on that.
I'm just, I'm batting cleanup, I'm batting cleanup. For Budget and Finance, we did meet on Friday, January 24th. We had three really interesting items on the agenda. The first, which we spent quite a bit of time on, was about the pass-through of credit card fees for people who use our portal for utilities. We had a discussion about some of the implications of those fees. The city actually incurs about $250,000 in fees a year that we pay in order to use credit cards specifically as opposed to like debit cards or if you're coming in to write a check. So we had a discussion about the future of what those fees look like, and I think that will be coming to a work session near you. So folks who weren't at, attending that meeting will be discussing it in the future again. We also got another update on the utility assistance programs, and the good news is that more people are enrolling. That's what we want. That's a good, that's a good thing. That's what we sought out to improve, and I think we're making good progress on that. And then we also reviewed the scope of work for the financial planning consultant. That's sort of the expert that we're bringing in to help us assess kind of the health of our organization from a perspective of are there levers that have gone untapped, are other municipalities utilizing efficiencies that we haven't thought of, and so on and so forth. So that, that was a, it was a really full agenda and a great meeting.
Great, thank you, and thank you for covering all those. All right, so now we are to Mayor-City Administrator Report, and so I will start out with Administrator Part.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. So TBD-related activities. So the council authorized a ballot measure to renew the Transportation Benefit District that will be on the April 22nd, 2025 election. As part of that measure, we are seeking members of the public who are interested in serving on two different committees, one advocating support of the proposition, the procommittee, and one advocating rejection of the proposition, which would be the concommittee. The job of these committees is to write statements, both for and/or against, that will appear in the local voter's pamphlet prior to the ballot measure being on that, on that election. The city doesn't provide staff support for either of those committees. The auditor's office is the point of contact. They provide instructions and specifications and deadlines for that committee work. We're not, we're allowed to, we're only allowed to have three people on each of those committees, although the committees are allowed to seek advice from others if they so choose. The statements for the voters' pamphlets are due to the auditor's office by February 28th. To be appointed to one of these committees, we're asking people to submit a letter of interest to our clerk's office stating which committee they would like to serve on, indicating and explaining why they're interested in serving as a committee member, and then including some basic information, address, telephone number, email address, that type of thing. The deadline for those letters of interest is Tuesday, February 18th, by 1:00 p.m., either by email or fax, and we have that information available on our website. That evening on the council agenda are two separate resolutions establishing those two committees, and so that's why we need the people to respond by that timeframe. Next, I wanted to give you a brief update on the FD Cares Program. So as a reminder, effective January 1, we started contracting with the Olympia Fire Department to participate in their FD Cares Program. This program focuses on providing community assistance, referral, and education services to community members who may be relying on the 911 Emergency Services System for what we would term non-acute concerns because they just don't have or are unaware of their options in terms of other ways in which they might get the help that they need. Examples of those non-acute services might include help with medication or contacting doctors or providers, home security concerns related to smoke detectors or repairs, signing up for meal delivery services, helping with in-home medical equipment or medication needs. The goal of the program is to get the people the specific resources and help they need, so at the same time reducing reliance on the 911 emergency system for those types of services. So most of the work these community members, most of this work will, with these community members, is referred to the FD Cares Program, which is a partnership with, between us and Olympia Fire District by our fire crews who are responding to 911 calls for these non-acute services. Once our fire crews make that referral, the FD Cares Program staff reach out to those people and work on getting them the help that they need. We've actually started utilizing the FD Cares Program currently with one of our residents who uses 911 frequently for these non-acute services. And just today, our staff completed interviews for the FD Cares member who will be dedicated to Tom Water on a part-time, 20 hours per week basis, and the goal is to have that position filled and operating within the next few weeks. In the meantime, the FD Cares Program is going to be working with our Tom Water Fire Department staff to train them over the next couple of weeks on procedures for referring patients and answering questions that they might have. And then a couple of, a few quick things. City offices are closed on Monday, the 17th of February in observance of President's Day. Councilmember Althouser mentioned the rescheduled public meeting for the General Government Committee meeting. And then as a fun reminder, the Tom Water Youth Showcase at the Washington Center for the Performing Arts is the month, is happening in the month of February. Jazz Night is Wednesday, the 12th, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m., and Orchestra Night is Tuesday, the 25th, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. And just as a reminder, this is a program that is a cooperation and collaboration between the Tom Water School District and our arts program that we've stood up in the last year or so, and it's, this will be the second year that we've been able to provide this program to our community, showcasing the many talents that we have here in our school district. And that's all I have unless there are questions.
Any questions? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So for my report, I was mentioning that it just seems like it's been busier than normal, and then when I started doing a list of all the things that I've done since the last council meeting, it became apparent. So I am now serving on the EDC Board, so that started in January. And so at the EDC Board, they had new, new members that were selected to join the EDC Board. We also got a report from the FIFA World Cup, and Olympia was chosen, Olympia-Lacey, our area, was chosen as one of the remote sites for that event, which entails a whole lot of, of people being able to attend remotely through visually, will probably have a big screen. Location and more information on that will be presented, will be happening, and again, that will be held in 2026, so that'll be next June. And then we got a report from, about TVW from Renee Radcliffe Sinclair, who is the president and CEO, regarding their expansion of their building on Capitol Boulevard. We also had a roundtable discussion. Also, we discussed the 2025 EDC budget, and we will be taking action on that at our next meeting later this month. And then the Pacific, discussed the Pacific Salish Economic Development District, and that was it for that meeting. I also, on Friday, February 24th, I attended an all-day AWC Mayor's Exchange, which I find very beneficial. They have the Mayor's Exchange twice a year with AWC, once on this side of the mountains, and then this, in October, they have it on the other side of the mountains. And it's a good way of, of mayors being able to get together and, and discuss a lot of the things that are coming up and how to handle certain things. I also did a, every, every other month, I have, it's called Coffee with the Mayor at the Old Town Center, and that's for our senior services. So I try to always do that where I can have, I can let the senior citizens know what's going on in the community and then also get to have conversations with them, and that is at our Old Town Center, which also provides lunch, which I'm not sure a lot of seniors know that, that we do provide lunch there five days a week. I also attended the Holiday Inn Grand Opening, so you know the two hotels that were over by the airport? They are now open, ready for business, and they're a Holiday Inn and a Sparks Hotel. So that was where the Osho Hotel was at. The owners are amazing and very much dedicated to making those great hotels, so, so that was exciting. And then on Saturday, the 1st, I attended the Olympia Area Chinese New Year Celebration, and that was an amazing event, absolutely amazing. It went from 5:00 until 9:30, and it was all different celebration. It had great food and, and arts, dancing of different areas of China and the different cultures within China, and it was just a really amazing event. So with that, I am going to now do council member reports, and I think I will start in Zoom, so Councilmember Jefferson, you are first.
Yes, on the 23rd of January, I attended the EMS Committee meeting, and we covered several points. One was the 2025 Quality Improvement Plan and Fiscal Year Initiatives. They reviewed the 2024 Comprehensive EMS Plan, emphasizing its 20-year vision and the need for structural and operational changes. The plan includes recognizing the diversity of service requirement across urban and rural areas. We had a discussion about ambulance license applications, which were approved, and we discussed the rates. One member wanted to know why AMR was higher compared to other applicants, and the reason being the rates were higher was because they pay union wages and benefits while they aim to provide the best service possible. The meeting also addressed the need for new officers and committees for upcoming tasks, including negotiating a new advanced life support contract and budget planning. That was my one meeting that I attended. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, I was able to go to a conference representing LOT, so I have the privilege of representing Tom Water with LOT, which is Lacey, Olympia, Tom Water, Thurston County Clean Water Alliance. And LOT was awarded a 2025 National Environmental Achievement Award from the National Association of Clean Water Agencies. The award recognizes outstanding contributions to environmental protection and the clean water community in the watershed collaboration category, which LOT had applied for. LOT's designation was for its Clean Water Community Connections Program. The program is designed to play an active role in broader community efforts that support water quality, including the development of additional affordable housing, collaborative planning for sea level rise, creating joint educational and recreational amenities, and partnering with school districts and more. So it was amazing to attend that conference, hear the sessions, see what other wastewater utility districts and agencies are doing, how it relates to what we're doing here. And there's a definite theme that LOT is exceeding a lot of expectations and regulatory limits, exceeding a meeting below, not violating them. limits, exceeding the meeting below, not violating them. I also have Thurston County Communications tomorrow, and then, I will be attending tomorrow a virtual meeting of Resident-Owned Communities Mobile Home Park Solutions 2025. And I hear that our mayor is gonna be speaking at that, so I'm excited to see her in that capacity. And then, Friday is the Thurston County Open Response Task for Prevention subgroup. And I had an update from Administrator Parks that the opioid abatement group is moving forward, which is super exciting, since we had made assignments over a year ago. So, thank you Administrator Parks for letting me know that we're moving forward. So, I look forward to see if we actually move forward. And that's my report.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Agabi?
Thank you, Mayor. I do not have anything, but starting from next week, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesdays is when I start to attend my meetings.
Great. Thank you. Uh, I will go to Councilmember Von Holtz.
Thank you, Mayor. Tomorrow night, I have inner-city transit, and then, next week, I have Public Health and Safety. Last week, I attended, I think it was last week, January was the longest 10 years of my life. So, but, there was a lunch and learn at a show, Cultural Center for their 12-week paid culinary program. And it, I think it's really cool that we have this opportunity in Tumwater. And so, anybody watching who has someone that might be interested, contact the Cultural Center. And I just think that that's a great opportunity. And there were, I was there, and so was one of our Tumwater police officers, and that meant a lot to the community members there to see our police showing up to see how they can be a part of doing things in this community to make it better. So, that was, that was the highlight of my week last week.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Althausser?
Thanks, Mayor. Looking at the clock, I'll keep it to a tight 25. But I did attend the Regional Housing Council Meeting on January 22nd alongside Councilmember Kathy, as always. We had a pretty brief agenda at that meeting. I think the most substantive item that we covered was, we did some planning for our retreat that we're going to have in May. I think that'll be a half-day retreat where we can do some strategic planning. So, we went over some of the questions that we hope to answer through that event, including what is sort of our future goals for the Regional Housing Council? Are there ways that we want the Regional Housing Council to be exposed to more types of policy work as an entity as opposed to primarily going over funding decisions? And also, are there ways that we can better incorporate lived experience and subject matter expertise into our decision-making processes? All, all of those decisions would require revisions to our internal agreements. So, we'll have the retreat and come up with our best aspirations. And at that point, I would be bringing back sort of what we decide could be the path forward for the, the council to consider after that point. We also appointed some more members to our Homeless Services Advisory Board and got some updates from our technical team on our upcoming RFP process, where we do issue recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners for grants. And we also went over some of the changes that'll be taking place to the point-in-time councils here.
Great. Thank you.
That's my report.
Thank you. So, we do not have any other business this evening. So, this is one of our shorter council meetings. So, with that, we are adjourned, everyone. Thank you.